Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this city council meeting. This is a regular city council meeting for Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, of the Rockport City Council. Call this meeting to order. Would you please rise and do pledge allegiance led by Councilman Brad?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, citizens should be heard. This time comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience from persons who have signed speaker's card located on table at the back of the training room of the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins, or written comments received by four P. M. on the day of the meeting on any agenda item or any subject matter that will be read at the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace is prohibited by law, shall be called for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. Since we are dealing with issues that we have dealt with on previous meetings and we have allowed those things to be brought up at the time that the subject is going to be considered, we will do that again, but I would like to point out to some of you that there is a request from staff that we may not take action on the item number nine. It may be postponed until the second meeting. If you still wish to speak, you're welcome to. I have one person wishes to be speaking, to speak on an item not on the agenda. Patrick Kane.
Good evening, Patrick Kane, eleven twenty-three East Cedar Street, Rockport. I've spoken a couple of times to city council about the short-term rental ordinance and its impact on existing ordinances that prohibit the rental of accessory-use dwellings in residential districts. What I've heard from the city manager and city planner is the city will deny a short-term rental permit for those properties as they are illegal according to the city's codes. For clarity, the accessory-use ordinance doesn't distinguish between short-term and long-term rentals. As each city council person should already know, these type of accessory-use rentals are prevalent throughout Rockport and have been for decades. What I've been unsuccessfully seeking is clarity on the city's intent with respect to accessory-use rentals. For that, I went to the city's comprehensive plan. According to the document, and this is a quote, "The plan is a roadmap between community aspirations and implementation. All of the suggestions for future projects and actions laid out in the plan are intended to be pursued by the city staff to enact in the real world," end quote. What I find interesting is the first recommendation made in the chapter on housing is, and this is a quote as well, "The language in the existing ordinances should be amended to allow for smaller homes on infill lots and accessory use or accessory dwelling units," end quote. This action was to ensure housing is available for a variety of income levels, and the plan specifically shows this was intended to be a short-term objective. But here we are, two years later, and not any action has been taken on that objective. I would like the city council to ask the staff to provide an update on the projects and actions they are undertaking to implement the comprehensive plan, not just on the accessory dwelling ordinance, but on all the short-term objectives that were identified in the plan. For the record, this would be the first update to council in the two years since that plan was updated. As a final note, a plan is usually put in place to focus an organization's resources. If that had been done, I wouldn't be up here today talking about accessory use rentals because that's in the plan, and you wouldn't be talking about short-term rental ordinances which weren't in the plan. So what's the purpose of the plan if we're not going to use it to guide staff's efforts? Thank you.
And as consent agenda, all consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine that the city council will be enacted by one motion. Be no separate discussion of these items unless council members so request, in which event the item will be removed from consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there any concern with the agenda items and consent? Would you like to have any removed?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Now, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Conduct public hearing on request from Ocean Glory Homes for permanent closure, abandonment, and vacation of a twenty-foot-wide alleyway lying between lots four through six and lots twelve through fourteen, block one oh eight, Manning Edition, City of Rockport, Ranges County, Texas, being zero point zero six nine acres. It is six thirty-five, and we are in public hearing. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, council, this is a routine, the routine, the routine, the straight closure, vacation request. Ordinance required the public hearing be conducted to see if any of the public have anything, any concerns. Gone through the utility office, city utilities, and they have no concerns about vacating this. And so if there's no further discussion or anything on it, then the next item will be the first reading of the ordinance to vacate it.
Okay. Anyone in public, anyone else here wish to address this item? This is a public hearing on this matter. If not, public hearing is closed. It is six thirty-six. Next item on the agenda, item number seven. Deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance authorizing the closing, vacating, and abandonment of zero point zero six nine acres of land being twenty-feet-wide alleyway lying between lots four through six and lots twelve through fourteen, block one oh eight, Manning Edition, City of Rockport, Ranges County, Texas, according to the plat recorded in volume one, page seven, plat records of Ranges County, Texas, providing for the terms and conditions of such vacation, abandonment, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deed on the zero point zero six nine acres to be closed, vacated, and abandoned, and providing for an effective date.
Reading of the ordinance to vacate the twenty-foot alleyway, and that was requested by Ocean Glory Homes. The public hearing we just held, no comments, and the appraisal came in at zero dollars.
Okay. Questions, council? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve item seven as presented.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Further discussion? Now, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number eight postponed from December twelfth. Deliberate and act on request to close South Austin Street from Market Street to Southside Worth Street, west one-half block of Main Street to Austin Street, one-half block of East Main Street towards Water Street, and west one-half block of St. Mary Street to Austin Street from March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from four P. M. till eleven P. M. and March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from seven A. M. till eleven P. M. for Fifth Annual Crawfish Festival, our alternate locations.
Mayor, council, we have gone around several iterations of what this should look like, and with the owner, we, I thought he'd be here, we have moved off of the Austin Street location, and we would like to entertain using the forty-three acres that the city purchased some years ago for a sports complex. Right now, that land is sitting vacant. It's not doing anything. There's sufficient parking, we think, on the lot next to the gun range. There's a lot of logistics to be worked out. There's still traffic security, everything that was existing with the Main Street plan. But we think we can successfully move that over there, and then as the city, we want to do a cost share with the owner, which he is amenable to, to put some money back into our Parks Department. So if you guys would entertain that, we would like permission to flesh that out between now and the next council meeting and bring you a full, a full presentation on that, if you would entertain it.
All right. Any questions, concerns?
I just, just make sure, you know, all the plans that they had in place for downtown, you know, the parking, security.
Got to do everything. Part of the packet for, for an application, and, and we think that it's probably a little bit more logical. There's some logistics with the, with the road there. We're going to have to really secure thirty-five there and make sure that that's going to be a safe area. But it, it's going to take some work, and there's going to be some improvements to the land that we've also talked to the owner about for transporting people back and forth, and I don't think there's an issue. So if you guys are amenable, we, we would like to proceed. We know it's going to be work, but, but we think we can work it out. We think it might end up being a really good site for that sort of thing in the future as well, to make us some revenue for our Parks Department.
Do you need any action?
Nope.
No, we'll just bring it back, put it on the next agenda for the twenty-third.
Yep.
Okay.
So actually, they need to, they need to deny, though, the Austin Street?
Yes, that would be the proper thing to do.
Deny the Austin Street.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Deny, deny item?
Nine.
Or, I'm sorry.
Eight, totally.
Eight. And then, do you need anything else for further action?
I'll see you on the next one if you guys like it.
With the new item.
I got it.
That'll work.
No, not yet. I guess so the motion just needs to be moved to deny item eight.
Yeah, that's right.
Move to deny item eight as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, unanimous. This will come back up on the meeting for the twenty-third.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, deliberate and act on second and final reading of ordinance amending the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-six, Businesses, by adding Article three, Short-Term Rentals, repealing all ordinances to the extent they are in conflict, providing for severability, providing for penalties, providing for an effective date.
Mayor, council, I'm going to respectfully ask that we postpone this again. We had some family illnesses and emergencies that prevented us from gathering the fee information that you had asked for, but we're not in any detriment postponing it, if you don't mind. And I would like to answer a couple of Mr. Kane's questions. The ordinance very clearly delineates between a short-term rental and a long-term rental. The short-term rental is anything less than thirty days, and I, I have not told anybody that we would deny any permit because the rules haven't been set. So just to clarify that and get it out there, that, that's, that's where those items fall, if there's any questions on it. But we do not have the fees and all of the information pulled together that you asked for.
Okay.
So if you'll just postpone, but I'll answer questions.
Okay. The man, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to suggest having it, the postponement extended beyond the second, or the second meeting in January, only because I have concerns. I know a lot of people have brought forward, but I received some correspondence, and I know that it states that you guys had a workshop on October twenty-fifth, or twenty-fourth of last year, and on November sixteenth, the committee had submitted some information over to you, Vanessa, with concerns. We went in front of council on the twelfth. They're stating that they had never received correspondence back from you. I would like to see a little bit more work with the council and the concerns that are being brought forth before the second reading.
They who?
Summer.
Summer?
Mm-hmm. I sent all of this over to you.
Okay. Yeah, I've been working with them. I'm on their agenda for the seventeenth. I've sent her the draft ordinance. I'll be happy to reach out.
No, it's just, it's on the sixteenth. It was reached out. It went in front of us on the twelfth. So she had said she hadn't been in contact with you between that correspondence on the sixteenth of November and when it went in front of first reading with us on the twelfth of December. So I just wanted to make sure that those concerns that were shared to you were addressed prior to us going into second reading.
I'll send you my correspondence with her because I think she said there's a couple of, there's a couple of things that aren't perfect, but overall, we're satisfied with it. So I'll be sure and see if I can dig those up and send it to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I know we've got a couple of folks here. I think it would be prudent to allow them to go ahead and speak if they would like to, so that we can consider that as we move forward with deliberation.
As I said earlier, you're welcome to speak tonight. It will likely be postponed until the next meeting, but if you would like to speak tonight, you're welcome to. I will call you, as I have the list down here, if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to. George Rikers.
Hello.
Kathy.
I know most, most of you know me. I'm George Rikers, eight oh two East Market Street in Rockport, and there's a few things in the short-term rules and regulations thing that really need, need to be looked at. It says in section twenty-six, thirty-six, paragraph ten, that some short-term rentals cannot hold weddings, and I think that's a little bit ridiculous because if a couple wants to get married in a home, a Pizza Hut, or any other place, that should be their business. The section also says that this short-term rental or this facility cannot have meetings or gatherings if they are not in a certain zone area. Again, I think this is ridiculous. South Rockport Neighbors has been meeting every month at seven thirty-two South Pearl Street for the last twenty-eight years, and now you want to kick us out because this facility is not in, in a business district. Once again, here we go. I think there's too much government.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Rikers. Tell me which section you said that's in?
Um.
Twenty-six, thirty-six?
Yeah.
So there's only nine items in there? I think you may have an older iteration because all of that is taken out. There you go. Oops, sorry. There's a new one. There's, it's not in there. We took all of the stuff regarding gathering and congregation out. Sorry.
You have a mind.
Mr. Gottfried.
I'm Jim Gottfried, eight oh two East Market, and my remarks have been based on, I guess, the old draft as well, so some of this may not be pertinent. My, my main concerns are that we're, they're asking, you're asking that a local contact person should be available twenty-four hours a day, and I don't think that's practical because I have two short-term rentals, and I sleep, and so I'm not available when I sleep to run if there's an emergency. Also, there may be occasion where I have to be out of town, and I don't see where I should have to be, I have to tell my tenants, get up and leave because I won't be available. It just seems to me that, that there's no other business owner that's told that they have to be, be available twenty-four-hour notice on their business, and I think this is discriminatory. The other question I had is the International Residential Code. I tried looking this up and was not available, it's not available without paying a fee. So I don't know what, what's involved since it's international, and I'm going to have to assume that if this council approves this, that they have read this code, all forty chapters, and are familiar with what that has to say. There's forty chapters to this code. And just for a little edification here, wherever you see the word "shall," in legal terms, you can, you can put the term "will" in there. "Shall" gives the impression that, maybe you should, maybe you shouldn't. It means you will, wherever it says "shall." Now, my suggestion is that the city officials meet with the Chamber of Commerce Short-Term Rental Committee, and that consists of people with personal and professional interest in short-term rentals, and I would think that that committee could have some constructive input. I understand you aren't going to meet with us.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be there on the seventeenth, and I've been at least to two other meetings to present on this through the process, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Carl Brown.
My name's Carl Brown. I'm being accompanied by my partner, Gloria Alfred. We bought seven, the address was seven three-two South Pearl Street, May two thousand and twenty-one. Previously, it was Anthony's by the Sea, and as you heard from George and stuff, it's, and just on the fact of, of what this Anthony's by the Sea used to be, was bed and breakfast, short-term rental. Also hosted weddings and special events, and also we've been keeping the South Rockport Neighbors meeting there and everything. But the short-term rental, twenty-six, thirty-six, I'm not repeating again, but the emphasis, and it's not a new copy that I have not received to sit, to, to maybe not even be here tonight, but I'm considered as a R-four in number ten. Says just B-one and R-six, hotel motels is the only area for, for weddings and special events. And the next thing on the number two is on International Residential Code. The last two and a half years, we've been building that, our bed and breakfast after Hurricane Harvey, after COVID, and then we've got the International Residential Code. Is it going to all of a sudden be our code? I'm from Texas. I was born and raised in Texas. Everything I see, I put on residential code is Texas. To me, international is something from California or something that's not pertaining to, you know, Texas, Rockport, Texas. The growth of small business, to me, is in the, is right there Market Street or where y'all are growing, Rockport City is. To me, y'all are running out the bed and breakfast. Bed and breakfast or short-term rental, running them out. Those people are here coming to Rockport for a special event, you know, something other than a hotel or even just to, you know, they want something special. The, and then also too, I'd like to add that the town of Fulton and outline Rockport city limits is not involved in any of this, and due to that right there is just running the business outside Rockport. So I, I'd really considered that the communication, it'd be better in rewrite, on the rewriting of this. Thank you.
Good evening, Patrick Kane, eleven twenty-three East Cedar Street. I was able to speak with Ms. Stronner on the way in, so I believe she's addressed a couple of these or will address them. So one was, y'all provided guidance at the last city council meeting to change the two deadlines on appealing to thirty days each. One was changed to thirty days, one was left as five days, so that needs to be updated. I believe that's just an oversight, but they're both in, in the same paragraph. Should be an easy fix. Ms. Stronner also said that the definition for occupants will be changed because despite what y'all were told last time, daytime guests were being included in the occupant definition, and those need to come out because that's already been ruled by the Texas Third Court Appeals as being unconstitutional. And another one I had was, and this, and, and Ms. Stronner said she'd take this one under advisement, but RVs are not short-term rentals, and that's straight from the Texas Comptroller. So us saying we're going to tax short-term, or RVs as a short-term rental and collect H.O.T., that's against Texas, you know, whatever you would call the, what do they call State Comptroller's Office. So their guidance is RVs are not included as short-term rentals, right? And so we're adding things into our ordinance that will be challenged, you know, and will cost the city legal fees, and, and they flat-out can be avoided upfront. The International Residential Code was mentioned, y'all in your draft ordinance, it still says insert section for what you're going to apply. As these gentlemen said, it probably shouldn't even be referred to in our ordinance. So there are several errors, you know, I'll say small, minor changes that need to be made to the ordinance before it gets second and final reading. Thank you.
Counsel, we have a recommendation from staff that's be postponed to the next council meeting. Do we have any question about that? Any thought, concern on that issue? If not, I would entertain a motion. Postpone this for meeting the twenty-third.
I just wanted to thank y'all for, thank you, Mayor, for letting the citizens speak on this, even though I think we're going to postpone action. Just give us a little more input from them. You want next meeting?
I, I, yeah, I do, if you, or if you have questions regarding what was talked about, we can answer those tonight and have any changes you want to see by the next meeting as well. That's certainly up to you.
Vanessa, I think a suggestion may be that due to the, the input that we continue to receive, some of it, some of it is kind of us repeating what's been said before, is perhaps a short presentation that's included in the agenda packet prior to consideration that can outline more visually, right? You can read an agenda memo, but it's, it's difficult. It tells a different type of story than just a short presentation PowerPoint that says, this is when this was first started, here's the workshops, the community input, here's the meetings with the, the chambers, all that, you know? And that way, we have a full packet that the citizens are able to see, and then when we consider it, I mean, they may still have additional input, and that's, that's, that's great, but I think it'll help kind of level maybe some of these, these thoughts that are coming in from some of your constituents.
I'll certainly have that for you on the next one because we have to go through the fees and how we arrived at those and everything, so I'll be happy to have that together.
Okay.
We, we did a significant amount of citizen input on this.
Absolutely.
And, you know, just because we didn't take your input doesn't mean we didn't hear your input. We kind of took the best of the best to make this, but we did a lot of work on the citizen input side of this.
Well, I think that's important.
I think it'll be important to line it out and talk about, and how many people we actually reached.
And it's a, it's an, I think it's an important story because it is, it is the intent of how this council has approached communicating with our public and hearing that. So if there are things we can continue to do better, we, we need to know that too, but I think that'll be a little bit more.
You'll have it on the next one, absolutely.
Does, does the next one give you enough time? Or would you like, would you like February?
Is Carrie back?
She's back. She's still having her mental problems. She's on here part-time.
Let's do first February. I mean, we're not in any particular hurry, I don't guess. I mean, we've waited this long.
I don't want to put y'all in a, in a, in a bind.
Y'all know, everybody's been sick.
Yeah.
Everybody's been sick, and we had holidays, and I, I'm not making excuses, but I'd rather have a whole healthy Carrie, and we can collaborate really well on it and get a good product.
And Mayor, I won't be in the next council meeting due to the live show, so I would prefer to be here if we can.
Okay.
Will you be at February first?
I would entertain a motion to the first meeting of February.
I move to postpone this agenda item nine to the first regularly-called council meeting in February.
The regular schedule. I have a motion second. Any further discussion? We call for a vote for Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Reports from council.
I've just been working with several people, yeah, with S.T.R.s, and other than that, been pretty enjoyable holidays. I got to spend it in Washington, White Christmas, so. So my family was much appreciative, and we had a really, really good, much-needed time. So I've invested myself into the E R and this position in the city, and it was a good, well-deserved vacation. But now I'm back to start the whole year and be just as busy again, probably for three more. So I appreciate everybody's input that they've given me on this S T R. I don't have as much knowledge or experience in all of the workshops, but I do hear your voice, and I'll make sure your concerns are addressed.
So I will be here next week because the San Patricio and Aransas County N H O, every meeting I proudly put this cup as cheap advertisement, but a lot of folks in the community don't know that we have a county fair because of the size of the Aransas County program for four-H. That is jointly done with San Patricio County. One of my extracurriculars is helping to lead the livestock youth education program with four-H. So it's outside of council, but it's a big piece of me, so just shameless plug, we've got the county fair coming up. The Queens contest is actually coming up on January thirteenth at the Centon High School. And then the next weekend starts the Heifer Show, and the following week, getting into that Tuesday, the twenty-second, twenty-third. Every day is the rest of the show, so we really hope that the community will, will come out and enjoy and see what our kids are doing, both on livestock as well as agriculture and homemaking. It's a really neat event. Saturday, the last Saturday of the show is the big auction, and so it's just a really great opportunity to come out and just check out, see what all of our kids are doing. So my next announcement, kind of following with that. Back in two thousand fifteen, my husband and I purchased some acreage outside the city. Because of my kids' involvement with livestock, we needed a place to kind of live with our, our animals. Harvey hit, everybody's got a Harvey story. Ours isn't special, but it caused us to pivot, and we moved back and purchased a home back in Spanish Woods. That said, we did a lot of family soul-searching, and we're kind of getting ready to go back to our trying not to be emotional because it's a hard decision. We're gonna go ahead and build out on our property like we originally planned. So with that, I'm gonna go on record, I'm not gonna be running for council again, and we're excited about really what we get to do with our family. And I've enjoyed working with you guys. I will continue my, my service on council till May, but I hope that we have some other citizens who are willing to step up.
Appreciate that. Appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Well, thanks for letting me follow that. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Uh, let's see. I've got one thing. On Thursday night, the Texas A and M, Texas Aggie Singing Cadets will be performing at the Martha Luigi Auditorium at six-thirty. We use this, the Texas, or the Rockport A and M Club usually has a Christmas party that we use to get donations for scholarships for our, our kids that are going to A and M. We did not have a Christmas party this year, mainly because A and M football wasn't doing great. But anyway, we had the opportunity to get the Singing Cadets here, and they will be performing Thursday night, and I would love to see the auditorium full and will help us with our, our scholarship fund for, for our local kids going to A and M. So that's, that's my shameless plug, and I apologize. I gotta follow that, but.
I think I'm housing six of those cadets.
Yes, I've got eight. Yeah, I've got eight, so.
Midnight snack.
Yeah, anybody wants to bring food to my house, come on.
Ward one. Your turn.
Again, I, it's a holiday, took it off. Daughter's in town from college, so I didn't, not doing too much, but we're back into the swing of things on the first January, you know, we hit the ground running and trying to get stuff done around here. I did attend the stormwater meeting yesterday, which I would just want to have you kind of just explain what they're trying to do with that stormwater meeting, if you don't mind, Vanessa.
Sure. So I thought I had a report on here, and that was my, that was my report, but since I don't, I'll take it as yours. No, I'm not on here. There has been a stormwater advisory committee for a number of years, as many as ten or more. So the committee has, was basically formed to borrow some money and do a project. They have continued to meet monthly for this period while they're trying to pay back the loan, which is almost done, but the advisory part of the committee is non-functional. They're not advising anybody. So we are pivoting, we're trying to pivot and take that into we're trying to take that and turn it into a technical committee. So we have, we've written a new ordinance that we'll be bringing to you guys for us, Aransas Pass, the portion of Aransas Pass that is in Aransas County, the Nav District and the county, and they all have representation on this advisory committee now, and everybody there is on board with turning it into a technical committee whereby we'll get all the entities working together on the drainage so that we are not just independently building projects that drain into each other. So it'll be new, it'll be different. There will be some things that have to be fleshed out. Not sure that Aransas Pass will participate, but they will be offered a seat. And then we intend to adopt a comprehensive drainage plan for the entire peninsula, and then hopefully that technical committee will work the plan. You have to be qualified to be on there. They can't just put me on there because, you know, I'm not qualified. It's gonna have to be someone with some skills, some technical skill, technical ability, so. It's gonna be a pivot. Hopefully, it's going to, it's gonna help. Hopefully, it's gonna help. That, that group worked together really well now. We just want to formalize the job that they're already doing. County Fulton has a seat. Did I not say that? I'm so sorry. Yeah, there's five. Aransas Pass, Fulton County, Nav District, Rockport.
Got you, okay.
Yep, so everybody's there. Everybody comes to the meetings every month. We all discuss the issues. We listen to the citizens. It's a really good committee, but the advisory part of it is not working. We don't advise them of anything. So we need those guys that are doing the work to, to actually work together and put good projects out for, for the whole peninsula. We're gonna have to talk at some point about funding because the best project may not be in Rockport. The best project for the whole peninsula might be in the county. So we're gonna get them rolling, and then we'll, we'll talk about how that's gonna work later. It may not ever work, but there's a vision. There's a vision for it, so.
Do you foresee the, the entities representatives being elected officials or staff?
Nope. You're not technical.
I'm, no, I'm not.
So it, right now, if I had to say who's gonna be on there, it's gonna be David Reed, it's gonna be Ryan Picarazzi, it's going to be the engineer that represents Fulton, Matt, is that his name? Okay, he's their operations supervisor, Matt, and everybody gets a backup too. The Nav District has indicated that they will hire an engineer to be on there, and then we're not sure about A P, but it will be certainly their choice. In the ordinance, there's lined out some, that you have to have the ability to make these decisions. So every entity will have a person and a backup, so hopefully we're doing some succession planning as well. So Ryan, and then I don't know who the backup would be, but it won't be you, sorry.
No, I wasn't looking for a job.
I'm just, I'm teasing you, I'm teasing you. But it's, we just need to get the people that are doing the work to do the work, and we need to get out of their way. That's, that's the honest truth.
Yeah.
And so I kind of like, just wanna keep you up to date. Going to meetings just in the last year, I've been going a lot more than I have in the past, and just seeing you guys talk, and we have, you guys have great plans, and I think it's gonna be great to have all these plans actually finally get implemented.
It's gonna materialize.
And I think it's really gonna help try to push these things out that we really need to get done to help, you know, with our stormwater and our drainage and all that.
Well, and with the county having the money for the comprehensive plan that'll do the whole peninsula, that, that group will guide that, and, you know, Ryan, hopefully, will be our represent, I mean, y'all have to appoint him, but you know, will be our representative to guide the plan and look out for our best interest so that as that comes together, we're represented, represented, and Fulton's represented, and, you know, the county, not that they ever would, but they could just come and say, here's your plan. But if we have that, that operational committee, they're gonna work together to put that plan in place, so. And make sure that everybody's represented, all of our best interests are represented. There's gonna be some give and take, and it's really gonna be good for it to be done at that level because of the knowledge, you know? Nobody's gonna just be grabbing a rope because it has our name on it, so.
I want to take just a moment and recognize someone that I think was a treasure to our city that has passed away recently. We have a gentleman named Jack Lyons who lived here, who was ninety-nine years old and flew sixty combat missions in the Pacific during the war. He was also the pilot who located Yamato, which was Yamamoto's flagship during the war, kept it inside until the task force got there and they sunk it in nineteen forty-five. He was working on his hundredth birthday, and he was a very good gentleman. He was Lynn Powers' father, Lynn and Steve. Anyway, on, I think, an appropriate day, the seventh of December, he passed away. It was Pearl Harbor Day, and we have lost a lot of, a vast number in the last year or two of our World War II veterans who are described by a lot of people now as the greatest generation we've had. And Jack, I consider him to be a friend. I got to sit and visit with him about a lot of issues and about things about our country, and I know what kind of a patriot he was, and it was not just claiming to be, it's because he was. And he was like a lot of others from that generation that we owe more than we'll ever be able to repay, and our kids owe more than they'll ever be able to repay. But Jack was a good man, and I will miss him, and I would like to have been around for his hundredth birthday party to say nice things about him. But we're losing those people rapidly, and we miss him, and I want Lynn and Steve to know that he was important to me, and I think he was important to our community, and I will miss him. That's all I've got. City Council will hold executive session pursuant to provisions of Chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in Section five fifty-one point zero seven one, consultations with attorneys seeking the advice of attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer or on a, or, and on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter, one, City Hall, and two, Concho Street, and General Land Office G L O drainage projects. And Section five five one point zero seven two, deliberations about real property to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. If deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. It is seven eleven, and we are in executive session.
Here's the machine running.
Yes, sir.
It is 7:56. We are out of executive session, back in regular session.
Motion to adjourn.
I have motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I didn't say.